Good morning. Today is Monday, April 5th, 2021. Commissioners Court is meeting in regular open session. Today, we are joined by ASL interpreters Dario Garcia and Leslie Joseph. Commissioner Ogden, would you like to introduce our speaker today for the pledge?
Yes, thank you, Jessica. Good morning, everyone. So I'm very proud to introduce our student who's going to be reciting the pledge for us today. Her name is Viridiana Garcia, and she is a sixth grader at Rio Vista College Preparatory School. Welcome, Viridiana.
Hi, thank you for having me.
Hi, Viridiana. How are you today?
Well, and yourself?
Really good. Very happy to have you here today. We are ready for you.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God and one indivisible.
Thank you. What school? I didn't catch that. What school did you go to, Viridiana?
Idea. Idea Vista.
Well, thank you. Well, you have a wonderful day. Thank you for being here with us.
Thank you, you too.
Bye-bye.
We now have an invocation by Reverend Dr. Carl Heimer from San Pablo Lutheran Church.
Dear God, Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful season that you've given us of the forgiveness of our sins and the joy of being alive and having you to be alive in us. We pray for our commissioners today and the staff that's here today and those who are part of this group and the meeting today. We pray, oh God, that you guide them and strengthen them and encourage them in the continuous service to our community. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Dr. Heimer. Thank you for being with us. Appreciate it. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Item number four is the consent agenda composed of items 4A through 4U. We do have a correction to read in for item 4B. Item 4B should read, approve and authorize the county judge to sign resolutions in support of county project proposals selected for the FY22 federal appropriation submission process to include the Alameda Project, Cotton Valley Connect by Digital El Paso Rural Broadband Deployment Project, Fabens Airport Automated Weather Observation System and Fuel Farm Expansion and Improvements Project, Connecting Communities Upper Valley First-Time Water and Wastewater Projects, Reentry Transformation Center Project, Crisis Intervention I'm sorry, Crisis Intervention Team, and three surface transportation projects to include Tierra de Este Extension, John Hayes Street Extension, and Bob Hope Extension. Are there any items members of the court would like to pull for further discussion?
Commissioners? Hearing? Yes, again, Commissioner Ogden?
I would like to pull item F, please, Judge.
Item F, thank you.
Any other items?
Second?
Commissioner Ogden?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Sanmaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number five is public comment. At this time, we do not have anybody signed up to speak for public comments. We will take no action for item number five. Item number six, A, presentation.
Jessica, just very quickly, just want to have a moment of silence. We've got, you know, our Capitol Police Officer William Evans, who was killed on the second, and a moment of silence for him, as well as DPS Trooper, who died in line of shooting last week, both law enforcement officers. So just if we could have a moment of silence for both. Thank you. Thank you. And just very quickly, just want to thank everyone on behalf of the commissioners and myself to Commissioners Court. We thank you very much for being part of our discussions and hearing a lot of the information that we need our community to know and understand. We will be talking about the COVID item later on. And so just want to welcome all of you. Thank you for being here. Thank you. Jessica?
Yes, sir. Item 6A from presentation. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding the 87th Texas Legislative Session to include presenting information for the court's consideration, removing or including bills on the county-state legislative agenda, and supporting or opposing filed legislation, and take any action necessary on aforementioned items.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. This is Daniel Collins, Governmental Affairs Manager. This update is a supplement to the Governmental Affairs update in your email inboxes this morning. I'm bringing you two proposed amendments to the county's legislative values document, and I wanted to give a very quick briefing on just a few bills that will be heard this week. Pardon me, I'm just putting the full screen on so I can see the slides. Okay, thank you, Alexis. So next slide, please. First, going to a couple of support statements that I'm proposing we add to the agenda. The first one deals with homelessness and reads, "Support legislative efforts to" That's actually a typo. That should read, "Support legislative efforts to combat homelessness and to connect homeless individuals to supports and services." This, again, is a very broad support statement that might be applied to multiple bills relating to homelessness. It arises because on Wednesday, the House Urban Affairs Committee is considering a few bills relating generally to homelessness. Of these, the clerks, the county clerk's office wanted to support one, House Bill 1196, which provides that, on request of a homeless individual, the state registrar or the clerk's office shall issue without a fee a certified copy of an individual's birth record, which, of course, can be helpful for homeless individuals to receive services. I'll pause on that support statement just to see if there are any questions. Again, Urban Affairs is considering some other homelessness bills, and I'm still vetting them with some staff, so it's possible we might apply this toward support for some of those bills as well. Were there any questions on that support statement?
Thank you. Well, really important for us, I know you've heard here in Commissioners Court just a lot of efforts and support for the homeless, so we want to thank you for that, Danny. Go ahead.
Yes. Yes, I agree, and that's why I wanted to flag it for staff. I'm thinking we might have a couple more bills that we might be supportive of, if not in this hearing, then going forward. So I think it'll be useful to have this on the agenda. The next two relate to UMC and to one bill in particular, their House Bill 2382.
Excuse me, just a second. Daniel, I've got Commissioner Robinson. Go ahead.
As I was saying, I appreciate the support that we have on those bills. We make sure we shine a light in all effort that we can in our situation with homeless. We make sure we want to shine a light on it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Daniel.
Okay. So these next two support statements both relate to a University Medical Center priority bill, House Bill 2382 by Representative Moody. The support statements read, first, "Support authorizing University Medical Center of El Paso to contract with a broker to sell hospital district real property." And the next statement reads, "Support eliminating term limits for University Medical Center of El Paso board members." Both of these bills' statements, again, relate to House Bill 2382 by Moody, which will be heard by the House Homeland Security and Public Safety Committee on Thursday. Actually, is that correct? I think that's wrong. Sorry, I think it's actually County Affairs that will be heard in this week. As filed, the bill would give El Paso County Hospital District the authority to contract with a broker to sell hospital real property. According to Rubin vote, right now, only Dallas County's Hospital District, Parkland, has such authority. UMC argues that having this authority would simplify the process for selling property and may yield a better value for real property sales by marketing to targeted buyers. I'm also told that Representative Moody, if they can get the draft language back in time, may also offer a committee substitute to this bill, which would additionally eliminate term limits for UMC board members. Right now, a UMC board member may not serve more than two consecutive three-year terms and needs to cool off for two years before they can be reappointed. UMC argues that no other hospital in their bracket has similar term limits. They also argue that giving the UMC board this flexibility allows for continuity of a seasoned leadership on their board. I'm also told that UMC might have already been reaching out to some of the Commissioner Court members individually for support for this bill and the forthcoming committee substitute. So I'll just pause there to see if there are any questions on that bill.
I did get to speak to Jacob, and of course, right now, they're going to go through some really, you know, changes and things that they're planning to do in the future. And we still have the option, if you don't, as a commissioner or myself, if we didn't want to continue, but that you're not limited. So I think just the fact that you still can do the same, but you can continue more than the two terms, I think it's excellent under these circumstances. So I don't know about the rest of the commissioners. Are there any comments on that particular bill?
Yes, Judge.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Commissioner Robinson.
Leslie, the person is a bad apple. I see no reason why we should limit the terms of anyone to serve. You've got good people doing a good job. You want to maintain the continuity in all respects. But we do have the option to move someone or not reappoint a person. So I think that we should not be, that authority should not be taken away from the judge and the county commissioners.
Yeah, I felt that way myself.
Or any elected official when it comes to that authority to pass someone to a board.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, I agree. And I think, I think everyone I see are nodding, Daniel, so I think it will be very much supported.
If there are any other questions, then, those are the only two amendments that I had. So we could have a motion now, which would be approve amendments to the 2021 legislative values document as presented today and direct staff to make conforming changes.
Do we just need one motion, or do we need to separate them?
We have before taken them all up as one motion, when I've proposed several amendments to the values document.
Okay, well, I'll make the motion to approve.
I think you might be muted, Jessica.
Commissioner Ogden?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Sanmaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I'll circulate an update or an updated agenda with your next Gov Affairs email. The next, some of the next slides I'm going to go through rather quickly just for the sake of time, because you've been briefed on versions of them before. Tomorrow will be Senate Bill 10, which is the Senate priority bill for the so-called anti-taxpayer-funded lobbyist bill. In all the ways that matter, it's substantially identical to House Bill 749 by Mays Middleton, which was heard back on March 26th. And Commissioner Stout testified against that bill at the time. I understand that Commissioner Stout will also be available to testify against Senate Bill 10 tomorrow on behalf of the county. So I'll just pause there and see if there are any questions on SB 10. Okay, hearing none. If we can go to the next slide. So this next bill, I might need some direction from the Commissioners Court on. On Wednesday, the Senate Transportation Committee will consider Senate Bill 1704 by Senator Blanco. The bill would designate a portion of the Patriot Freeway, US 54 in El Paso, specifically from its intersection with Highway Loop 375 to the New Mexico State border as the Korean War Veterans Memorial Highway. Techstat has authorized direct signs to designate the memorial highway, but signs must be funded by grants or donations. According to Senator Blanco's office, the bill arises from a request from retired Air Force Staff Sergeant Pete Flores of El Paso, who's a Korean War veteran and president of the Korean War Veterans Association. Prior to this bill being set for a hearing, Senator Blanco's office asked if the county had a position on the bill. I took a question to staff and got, I guess what I characterize as like mixed positive feedback. Mike Opanandes, our new Economic Development Director, said that designating the highway to honor veterans would positively reflect the community's relationship with our military. He didn't have concerns except a generalized concern about ensuring an equitable process for other veterans groups seeking similar designations. Carl Dwyer, our county Veteran Service Officer, echoed this concern about recognizing only one era of war veterans and wondered if a more general Veterans Memorial Highway moniker, some such moniker, would be more appropriate. I did communicate this feedback to Senator Blanco's office and said I'd bring this to Commissioners Court. Importantly, the bill states that this Korean War Veterans Memorial designation is in addition to any other designation. So I understand that to mean that the stretch of highway could be co-designated in the future if someone were to make another legislative effort to do so. And I guess at this point, I'll have to turn it over to the Commissioners Court whether or not you would like to take a formal position to support 1704. As with any piece of legislation, the court's, of course, under no obligation to take a formal position. If the court does want to support it, I have a motion ready. But I'll pause there to see if there's any questions or discussion.
Commissioners, any comments?
Yes, Judge.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Well, some people may not be in support of it, but I support this effort. The Patriot Freeway, which supports 375 from, let's see, Railroad Drive all the way to Montana, that was designated Patriot Freeway. That portion, if you look in the background, the rest you have behind that was the support is support of all veterans, not just one segment of veteran population. So Patriot Freeway is designated, if you look at the background and the rest you have behind the support and approval was to support all veterans. And that being Patriot Freeway. So there's no disrespect for any other branch of service or era of service. It's all branches, all eras.
And Commissioner, Daniel was saying that you could have others, or propose others, as they came up. That sort of helped me with wanting to support it, knowing that it won't be limited just to Korean War veterans. So does that help at all, Commissioner Robinson, that anybody else could, you know? Because I know I did participate with Senator Blanco, the Koreans. I was very impressed, the number of actual Koreans that came to thank El Paso and the veterans, I think, a year ago or so. They came all the way from Korea here and spent time here. So they have, I think that's what moved Senator Blanco. It was a great participation on their behalf to be here for that event. So anyway, just my comment to see what everybody else thinks.
Well, I support the effort. It's not limited. But just to remind you that the Patriot Freeway It's not limited, but I just reminded that the Patriot Freeway was done by the former state rep Hannity and Fixit. But the Patriot Freeway, they were supporting all veterans of all eras. So this effort by Senator Blanco, I support.
Thank you.
Is that a motion to approve, Commissioner Robinson?
The most.
I'll second.
And to be clear, I think that's the direction of the court. So I think the motion would be amend the county's 2021 Legislative Values Document to support designating US 54 in El Paso as the Korean War Veterans Memorial.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Ogilvy?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. This next one is House Bill 118 by Representative Ortega. On Thursday, this bill will be heard in committee. The bill requires private firearm sales and transfers to require background checks. Federal law requires that federally licensed firearms dealers run a background check on a buyer before they may buy a firearm. However, Texas doesn't require private sellers to run background checks when transferring a firearm to another person. Representative Ortega argues that closing this, which she perceives as a loophole, will make Texans safer from gun violence. This is one of many bills filed by our delegation following the August 2019 mass shooting in El Paso. I understood that our delegation members would participate in Thursday's hearing, not just Representative Ortega, who will be laying out the bill. Rep. Ortega asked for the county's support for the bill. Our agenda already includes support for legislation intended to strengthen community safety and prevent mass violence. Because he'll already be in Austin, Commissioner Stout, I believe, offered to testify in support of the bill on behalf of the county. And unless the court wants to give me direction, I don't actually need action on this item. Again, I think it's already encompassed by our agenda. So this is just a briefing, unless someone wants to give me counterdirection.
No, I just like what we're doing, and I'm glad, Commissioner Stout, that you'll be there. So I'm sure that the court is supporting this particular bill. So good luck on that one, Commissioner Stout. Thank you for supporting that.
My pleasure. Okay, and then last slide. Again, I'll go through these very briefly. Long story short, there are at least three fireworks bills that are being heard in House County Affairs on Thursday that are at odds with our opposition statement regarding fireworks, because they, in the case of HB 83, they extend the July fireworks season by a day, pretty much identical to what happened in a bill that was heard last week by Representative Cortez. The next two bills would prohibit our ability to prohibit fireworks sales during drought conditions. And then the last bill, House Bill 4519 by Representative Guian, would add two fireworks seasons, one in June and another for Labor Day, which wouldn't be objectionable, except that they don't provide us any opportunity to first approve fireworks sales during these new periods. Accordingly, all three of these are, again, in opposition to our adopted agenda. So I anticipate I will drop cards against them. Again, I don't need action from the court here. I just wanted to give you a briefing. I'll pause here for questions. Okay. If there are no other questions, that concludes my presentation for this week. Again, you have a larger update in your email inboxes.
Thank you, Daniel. I just want to, on behalf of the legal department, who works really close with you and realizes that you're texting in the middle of the night and so on, just, I want to thank you, just have heard such great things about your level of commitment and energy and time that you spend. And so, everyone very pleased. But Joanne Bernal did bring forth the, you know, just the exceptional job that you're doing. So on behalf of the Commissioners' Court as well, we want to thank you for your dedication to such important part of our commitment on these bills. So thank you.
That's very nice. Thank you, Judge. I appreciate it.
Jessica?
Item 6B, receive a presentation and discuss the monthly report from the Council of Judges.
Can you hear me?
Hi, Michael.
Good morning. Good morning, County Judge, Commissioners, Betsy. This is Mike Kikero. I'm the Executive Director of the Council of Judges. Thank you for receiving our report today. As of April 1st, our courts have embarked on a new phase in our pandemic response. Under the authority of the Texas Supreme Court Order Number 36, in-person hearings are now an option in our courts. As our recently re-elected local administrative judge, Linda Chu, likes to say, "We are dipping our toe into cold water, moving cautiously and with care." Remote Zoom hearings are still strongly encouraged. The courts will begin scheduling necessary in-person hearings on a rotation basis, and the number of these proceedings will be capped. Furthermore, every court will enforce masks and social distancing. The court's mandatory health-safety protocols were developed in consultation with the El Paso Department of Public Health and other county officials. Judges will be mindful of the general risk in the community as we move forward. For the first month, courts will not request transport of inmates to allow us time to work with the sheriff's office. Also, jury trials will begin on a very limited basis according to our stringent jury-trial health-safety requirements. The first trial date is scheduled for April 30th. Judge Chu has appointed a committee to help with the planning for our pandemic transition strategies. First, the approach must be flexible, as we've learned that community risk factors can change quickly. Second, our justice system has implemented technology and process solutions to the pandemic that have been highly successful, and we want to incorporate these solutions into our permanent court processes. These include electronic fingerprinting in the courts and video conferencing where appropriate. Frankly, many people have said they appreciate being able to conduct their court business from home and without a trip to the courthouse. Part of that planning will involve the number of pending cases in our courts. We find that during the pandemic, the number of felony and civil cases awaiting resolution has grown by 50% from our pre-pandemic numbers. Family courts saw 23% growth. Looking at data from across the country and hearing from other courts in Texas, El Paso County can be very proud that our hard work and our innovations have prevented this backlog from becoming far worse. Still, our courts, our justice system, and our attorneys will have to grapple with these cases to catch up and provide everyone their day in court. That will frankly require new solutions and probably new investment. The Council of Judges is examining the use of virtual trials, whereby jurors use specially configured tablets and perform their jury service from home. These virtual trials can augment efforts to hold trials without the risk or burden of calling people to the courthouse. But virtual trials will require the investment in tablets and training necessary to safeguard the rights of parties. The state legislature now is being asked to appropriate funding for additional visiting judges to assist the active judges in resolving pending cases. This is great, and we appreciate that. But additional visiting judges will require, will likely require additional temporary staff and other resources. The Case Management Committee of the Council of Judges will also continue to examine process improvements to make better use of judicial resources. We have already been in touch with Mr. Hargrove to begin working through what these changes might look like. I want to take a deep breath and thank everyone who has worked so hard to get our courts to this point. We are a part of this community, one that has worked so hard to bring the spread of COVID down. Our expansion to in-person proceedings would not be possible if we could not take this step without confidence in the promising data on community risk improvement. Our judges and court staff have worked very hard over the last year to serve the community under very trying circumstances. And I applaud everyone who has honored their commitment to public service. We know that the courts could not have remained in operation during the pandemic without the efforts of the county judge and Commissioners' Court, the sheriff's office and law enforcement, adult probation, private attorneys, public defenders, county attorney's office, district attorney's office, and county administration, particularly criminal justice coordination. Last, we would like to let you know how exciting it was to be invited to speak with Dr. Lisley Madrigal, the County Strategic Planning Manager, about our court's ideas and goals for the future. Though the courts have their own specific objectives as a third branch of government, we see cooperative planning as a next step in the great relationship that exists between our branches of government. With that, I conclude my report and ask if there are any questions.
Mike, I want to thank you. If you look at other jurisdictions and the collaboration that's taking place, it would be so uncomfortable and awkward if you were going in a different direction as to Commissioners' Court. You know, we're being cautious, we're doing everything that we can. We've got a return-to-work plan that Nicole is leading with other departments. But just to know that you're always just as cautious, just as prudent, and you know, Judge Chu and Judge Morales have worked so close with us. I was very impressed that, you know, she was asked to be on KBI Extra, which is sometimes difficult, but she understood that it had to be a communication to, you know, to our community. And so she does so much, not only internally, but to get everyone to know what we're doing. And just the idea that, the creativity and how progressive, because there are so many things that people, you know, we forget about all the things we say we've learned and we're not going to do. And then before you know it, you go right back and you leave out things that are now working different. But just her vision and the Council of Judges' vision to continue to do those things that worked for us, whether it's the Zoom opportunities, whether it's working from home, without this idea that in some of the jurisdictions that I've talked to, it's just like, everybody come back, as if nothing happened. And they didn't learn from some of the things that, we don't want to, we know that having a huge, you know, courthouse with a lot of people never has made sense from economical, from the elevator situation to everything else, to having an influenza later on. So just hearing this vision, Mike, and what you've supported and what both judges have done, Judge Chu and Judge Morales, I'm very appreciative, very thankful, and I'm sure the court is as well, of this alignment that, to be, you know, sort of working together and being able to show how collaborative things are taking place. More than anything, we're still at the crossroads. She's still being prudent about, do we have enough information to make decisions? And as we get more information, she's moving accordingly. So I want to thank you and Council of Judges for just that alignment. I can tell you, it would be very awkward as our role models to our community. We're going in different directions, and it's something I've never had to worry about. So, Mike, thank you, and please pass it on to the rest of your team.
I certainly will. Thank you very much, Judge Samaniego.
Thank you, Mike. Jessica?
Item number seven, County Administration. Receive a report and discuss the CARES Act grant and the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act 2021.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Wally Hargrove from the Office of Budget and Policy. Our office continues to work with county departments on eligible expenses under the CARES Act. Expenses and purchase orders to date total $21.3 million, and current commitments now total $3.7 million, which brings our remaining overall funds to approximately $2.5 million. Of that current balance, just over $500,000 will be used to cover ongoing PPE and operating costs. All remaining available funds have been moved to the reserve account for the court's further consideration for allocation, and it's just over $2 million. Our team is working closely with county administration to coordinate the planning and recording of the strategic usage of the remaining funds, along with the upcoming American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, funding, for a meeting in the very near future. We anticipate to receive our first allocation from this source of fundings on May 10th, and we'll continue to monitor the allowable usage of the funds as well as the detailed guidance. Thank you, and that concludes today's item, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Wally. Any questions for Commissioners? Hearing none? Thank you. Thank you, Wally. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item number eight, discuss and take appropriate action regarding El Paso County's preparation and response for COVID-19.
Jessica, can I ask you, if we could go to Item F for Commissioner Ogilvy before we go into those items?
Yes, sir.
Item 4F, approve and authorize the county judge to sign the First Amendment to Chapter 381 Economic Development Program Agreement, Financial Assistance for Safety, Technology, and Economic Resilience with the Better Business Bureau Paso del Norte. Funding in the amount of $64,872 is available in General Fund Economic Impact Initiative, contract number 20210234.
Thank you, Commissioner Ogilvy.
Yes, Judge, I just had a couple of questions. I don't see Michael.
Betsy is going to...
Oh, sorry. Okay, thank you, Betsy. So I know that this particular item has to do with a more pared-down version of our original agreement with the Better Business Bureau, just to cover some of the main, the website management and the social media and the dashboard. And I just wanted to make sure, I understand that we're in talks with the city to be able to coordinate and cost share for a future amendment. But will the future amendment, the more permanent one, will that be more like the original agreement that had a lot more that the Better Business Bureau was going to be doing for us? Or is it going to be like the more pared-down version that we're entering into now?
Thank you so much, Commissioner, and hopefully, if I can answer your questions. If not, we may need to wait for Michael's return. But for that particular question, yes, ma'am. The negotiations with the city would include additional services, more similar to some of the previous services, especially the outreach piece, like the use of promotoras and things of that nature. So that is what we're working on, and we hope to bring back to the court within the next couple of weeks after we're able to negotiate those details with the city. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that was my only question, Judge.
Thank you. Okay, Jessica?
So, and we need...
We just need motion to approve that amendment, please, Judge.
That's correct. I move to approve, please.
Second?
Commissioner Ogilvy?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout? Commissioner Stout?
Sorry, aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Judge, we have a correction to read in for Item 4G from the consent. Could we please have a motion to reconsider Item 4G?
So moved.
Commissioner Ogilvy?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. And for Item 4G, the correction should be approve and authorize the county judge to sign the Third Amendment to Election Systems and Software Sales Agreement and General Terms beginning April 5, 2021, through April 4, 2024. Funding is available in SR Election Services Elections Expense, contract number 20210237. That was the only correction under.
Thank you. Move to approve?
Second. Commissioner Ogilvy?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number eight, discuss and... Item number eight, discuss and take appropriate action regarding El Paso County's preparation and response for COVID-19.
Thank you, Betsy.
Thank you, Judge. As you may recall, we will be going to biweekly updates from the city, Dr. Ocaranza, Chief Rodriguez, and UMC. So today's updates, we will begin with members of the court. So Judge, do you have updates you'd like to share with the group?
Yeah, thank you. I'm sort of bubbling with, I'm so proud of what happened on Thursday. We had, at Vinton, was just amazing. Just the flexibility and things that happened, we started off at, you know, maybe like around 1,400 that we had, and then we're able to accommodate for 2,000. 2,000 Johnson &amp; Johnson were distributed, and that required some support from UMC on the syringes, but things were just amazing. So just, you know, I wish more people understood what Chief Esparsa has to do at ESD Number Two to make this happen, and along with all with Nicole and my team and the commissioners' courts trying to get the food out there, getting volunteers, and obviously always, always wanting volunteers. So along with Chief Esparsa, you know, Texas Division of Emergency Management, Texas State Health Services, the National Guard, Constable Gartes' office, Constable Javier Garcia's office, Constable Luisa Gilard's office, Rio Grande Council of Governments, and the City of Anthony, that was there with other agencies from Anthony, and just amazing what was taking place. You know, this is our third already, you know, we've had Montana Vista, Torneo, and then Vinton, and we're back again for the second J&amp;J dose there in Torneo on Friday. And so also welcoming volunteers, we're getting a lot better from the portables that are there, the water and everyone else. But just the, what people have said is just how rewarding it's been for county employees to be involved, because they feel, you know, they're always doing something, but they're behind the scene, and here they get to be in the front lines and very excited to have so many people from the county participating. But also, the individuals that are getting the vaccine are so appreciative. I mean, it's just amazing as to how appreciative they are. So it will take a little bit of time, but I really want to thank the individuals. Starting off with our chief administrator, Betsy Keller, tremendous, I didn't know if you were one of the healthcare workers, you were right in the midst of all the cars moving, and so I want to thank you. Judge Becky Bustamante, JP4, Amy Hernandez from Representative Moody's office, Cassandra Urutia, Senator Blanco's office, Mackenzie McLaughlin, Budget and Fiscal Policy, Eric Garcia from the County Attorney's Office, Sal Alonso, Public Works Department, Anna Bowling from the County Attorney's Office, Claudio Olague from Human Resources, Anthony Martinez from the County Attorney's Office, Amy Moncés Weiss, County Attorney's Office, Iuradina Villa, County Attorney's Office, Lisette Ardey, and Mayela Mejia, and Commissioner from Commissioner Robinson's office, but also Commissioner Robinson, thank you for being there as well. Carl McKellen, let me see, if I can pronounce that right, I always mess up, Carl Mekelheim. But anyway, he, a little extra applause for him, because he was very early and left very late, and sort of went through different shifts of all the volunteers, so I want to thank Carl for that. Nancy Casas, County Attorney's Office, and then, of course, Constable Gartes' office, but we had Cindy Rivera, Nadia Aleman, Diana Marcus, and Rick Delgado. And from ESD Number Two, Edmundo Carlos, we had Vaena Reinos Carlos Hernandez, and from the Town of Anthony, Public Works Manager, Erp, Hakes, was Jorge Morales, Nathan Garcia, and Daniel Mata. And of course, I want to thank my office as well, with Nicole, Erica, and Crystal, that they've really, you know, exerted a lot of effort to be there. So just want to thank the county employees, it's just, I mean, just so proud to see that we get probably more so, maybe 80% are the county employees that are participating, and it's something that I think is very welcomed. They feel good about it, and so do the people, so I want to thank them for that. And then just finally, just want to reiterate, you know, people getting excited, we're still worried about what happens in Easter, we're still looking at the variations of the virus, still feel that we still need to be prudent, want to thank the community. We get so much accolades compared to any other place, I mean, wearing their mask, you know, a lot of the business still holding back at 75, 50%. Great community, and I think we're going to, like I've been saying, we're going to be an amazing role model for the rest of the country. So want to thank our employees, but also our community, the way they're responding. And I see other communities that have moved a little too fast, and I think that we might, some of these communities might regret what can happen going forward. So once again, we're at the crossroads, we're almost there, we need to get excited, but not, we're not there yet. I feel that we're about a month away to make it really be behind us. So once again, I thank everyone for being cautious and prudent going forward. Thank you. By the way, just last thing, we'll be having a press conference at noon today, because we are getting more, more of the vaccines, much more than most communities. We were told, and I've said it several times, if we can show capacity, we're going to get more, and that's been the case, both from UMC, it almost doubled, and the city almost doubled, and we'll be able to get for the clinics. Typically, we get the vaccines from our hub and then send it to the clinics. We're now actually, Jacob and his team were able to get the allocations directly to them over and above. And then I want to reiterate that that's what we're doing also in the rural areas, it's vaccines over and above from the hubs and the rest of the people that are registered. So thank you for that. Thank you, Betsy.
Thank you, Judge. Commissioner Leon?
Yes, thank you, Betsy. Judge, I wanted to echo what you just said, and also thank you for being out at all these locations. I saw you out there at Montana Vista last week, and it takes a lot of energy, I wanted to thank you. I want to thank a member of my staff, Carl, and also I reached out to Betsy over the weekend to thank her, because on top of everything else she has to do, she volunteered, and it's a tremendous example for the rest of our employees and us to follow, so thank you. It was just, as you said, Judge, the folks, from what I heard, were just so ecstatic that they, just like us, we want to live, we want to stay healthy. So thank you all, and it's a great example, like you said, Judge, for the rest of the nation to see how we do it in El Paso. Having said that, I also wanted to highlight something during my, my meeting over at JPD, the board meeting, something caught my ear, as I always say, that other cities, other counties are interested in what's going on in El Paso, but this one caught my ear because it's the nation of Colombia that's interested in what's going on in JPD. So I asked Chief Martinez just to send me a little snippet of what's going on, and I'll read this to you, because I am so proud of what's going on there. Rosie Medina, Director of Special Programs, will be working with the National Drug Court Institute in the U.S. Department of State to provide training and technical assistance to eight regions in Colombia on the design, implementation, and sustainability of Juvenile Drug Treatment Court. This is a two-year program which will entail virtual training and technical assistance as well as onsite training to the various jurisdictions. Ms. Medina, along with other juvenile court treatment professionals from across the U.S., to include the Honorable Sam Medrano Jr., will be also working closely with the embassy in Colombia to effectively carry out this project with our international partners. So a tremendous program that we have there, and there's no other greater compliment than somebody wanted to do what they're doing in El Paso. So Chief Martinez, congratulations. Rosie, congratulations, great job.
You've always talked about national, now we're going world. They've got so many things going for them, I'm very proud, very proud. Thank you for your, your relationship with that department, and Chief Martinez, just an amazing job, so thank you, Commissioner. Betsy? That's correct.
Thank you, Commissioner Leon. Thank you, Judge. Commissioner Stout?
Judge and commissioners, I don't, I don't have anything to update you on. I missed the community's partner meeting on Friday because I was in transit, and I guess we did have a task force meeting, and we had a presentation from Kirakabi, which is a fintech company that I don't know if you'll remember, that we incentivized to come here to El Paso a couple of years ago, and they are talking, I think we may have heard about it before, but they're talking about putting in, putting into place a, an app or a program that would allow us to do some data, data tracing, and so we're waiting to see if that's something that we can bring before the commissioners' court. I know that they're going to be asking for, for some support, it's, you know, they want a private-public partnership, and so they're going to be wanting some support financially, possibly from the county and from the city. And so I told them that I would be happy to help get that on the agenda, it's something that I feel would be, would be something positive, would be going, utilizing businesses basically, and providing incentives for businesses and users of the app to sign up to the app and, for the app, and then, and then people would provide information, or they would get information about where people are, where people have been going, and what they've been, what they've been doing, so they can make, it'll make things easier for things like contact tracing for, for things like COVID. So I know, Betsy, if you have any other details that I left out about what that is, but hopefully we'll have a conversation about that at court here pretty soon.
Thank you, thank you for bringing that up. Thank you, Commissioner. Betsy?
Thank you, Commissioner Stout. Yes, sir. On that note, I have connected Michael with Stephen Kwong from Kirakabi to get more details and to go through that option with the city. One of the, separate from the data piece of it, what's really exciting about this concept is a lot of large companies have incentive programs that they've had built or built for themselves, and it's very costly to build these types of technology infrastructure, but this would be expanded to a lot of smaller local businesses and give them access to technology that they may not normally have. And so we are working to see what that partnership would look like, and we'll work closely with Commissioner Stout to bring that item back for consideration by commissioners' court as we have more details. So on its own, it's a very positive possible 381 type of business support program that we may want to consider, at least to help get it launched. Commissioner Robinson, did you have an update?
Yes, well, thank you. First of all, I want to thank everyone, we can all have a happy Easter, very, very joyous day, very, very busy weekend, we appreciate the echoes and thoughts that the justice made in regard to the immunization in Vinton this past week, past weekend. 2,000 people, that is tremendous. Just want to make sure we shine a light on that, that effort, that we continue, that we still have people that, we need to do it again, I envision, because the need is there. By the same token, the effort that Joel had made in regards to homeless situation, appreciate everything he's doing and continue to do, just want to make sure we shine a light on that effort, and it's not going to go away unless we make something happen. So thank you for all the things that you guys do, and as a county, we need to keep moving forward and set an example, as the judge say.
Thank you, Commissioner Robinson. Betsy?
Commissioner Olgin?
Thank you, Betsy. I don't have so much of an update, Judge, but I just do want to make a comment, again, just to reiterate the comment that I made last week, that I'm hoping that Chief Rodriguez is looking towards what the ESD Number Two did with these past two clinics as far as no longer requiring pre-registration. I think the ESD has shown us that it is completely possible to effectively and efficiently administer very large numbers of vaccines without having folks have to pre-register first. We saw the 2,000 in Vinton this past week, and then the 1,400 in Montana Vista the week before that. So I know, that's a comment that I had made to the chief that he told me he would be looking into, so I'm hoping we can get an update regarding that, what he's found regarding that, hopefully when he's here next week, or perhaps when, I know Betsy has a meeting scheduled with them on Wednesday. But I really think that that's something that we need to be looking into, especially now that the eligible individuals has been opened up. I mean, clearly, the ESD has shown us that it is possible, and that it's very effective and very efficient. I heard from a lot of folks who've gone to the different sites, both Montana Vista and then Vinton last week, where, you know, people expected that there was going to be a long line, so they weren't upset about having to wait in a line, but they were very, very impressed with the process once they actually got to where the vaccinations were being administered, to just how efficient and effective the entire process was. So I've been hearing from, from folks since the ESW started, ESD started providing these vaccinations out in the rural parts of the county, just people are very, like you said, very grateful for that opportunity to get a vaccine that they probably wouldn't have been able to get otherwise if the ESW, ESD wasn't going out to these communities. So I'm just hoping that that's something that Chief Rodriguez continues to look into, and that we can hopefully start moving towards.
Yeah, and I'll push hard on that, because it's more of a trend of the future. Supposedly, there's going to be a time when there's going to be more vaccines than individuals to give them, and so that would already set us up for that, that we would be available in different places without an appointment, so that they could come in and we could push hard to get them in. And so I think it's more of a trend towards the future than the appointment model. I think the appointment model seems more temporary, but not as efficient as saying, okay, now we need to get people, so whoever comes by, we're going to do everything possible to get that shot in the arm, so you're right. And I'll work with, I'll talk to him later today, and let him know, push a little harder.
And the sooner we start preparing for that, the better prepared we're going to be.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner Olgin. Go ahead, Betsy.
Yes, sir, thank you. So first, I do want to thank you all for your work and your support of these vaccine sites. Judge, your positivity and your energy out there, really, my legs didn't hurt from standing on the concrete floor, because I'd look up and I'd see your positive face and your smiling and going car to car, it was very, very nice and inspiring. And then also, Commissioner Robinson, thank you so much for all the snacks and the treats you brought, very, very right moment for uplift as well, it's great to have you both out there and for all the volunteers. Also, want to echo the comments about Nicole, particularly about Nicole. It has been such a pleasure seeing how she has just taken such a lead in coordinating so many things going on at these sites. It was really, really helpful. And plus, it was a great opportunity to work with volunteers from other counties around the state. I was able to actually learn more about how other ESDs do certain things that might be beneficial and helpful to us in the future. So I really cannot emphasize enough how much I enjoy being out there with our team. And Lizette was my, my partner at my table, it was really, it was a great, great teamwork, just a great opportunity. Also, wanted to share with...
Travis County, we had Bear County out there, my goodness, and they...
Travis?
Oh my goodness, it's just so nice, and the great comments I hear about our community and how they're treated when they're here, it's so nice to hear. So thank you, sorry, go ahead, Betsy.
Yes, sir, thank you. And then also, just wanted to mention to the court, we are going to be starting our community cleanups again. Norma has worked very closely with Dr. Ocaranza to make sure we're following all public health safety guidelines. We will be getting information out to all of you about those dates and times for those community cleanups, but just wanted to share that information with the court. Also, I mentioned earlier that we would be going to biweekly updates from... Also, I mentioned earlier that we would be going to bi-weekly updates from the city OEM and UMC. If there is anything the court needs in the meantime, or if there's anything urgent they have to update us, we'll keep this item on the agenda so it'll always be available. Or you can send us your concerns or comments or questions and we can share those with the OEM team on our Wednesday phone calls. Nicole, Joel and myself and sometimes Judge, we get, jump on those calls to, to get any critical information exchanged. So glad to relay any information on behalf of the court. And I believe we did give that update last Monday that, that it would be going bi-weekly. And if we did not, I'm sorry, but we'll double check that. But the, the teams will be on every other week going forward. And that's all we have under this item. Unless there's any questions from the court, we can close this item.
Thank you, Betsy. Go ahead, Jessica.
One thing, I'm sorry, I did want to mention is this week is second dose shots only. I think you may have mentioned it in Tornillo. It's the Pfizer vaccine. I, I may have missed that. I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, the second, the second dose of the Pfizer. So I'm sorry. That's a great correction. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. And that concludes this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica?
Okay, no action for item number eight. Item number nine, purchasing. Approve awarding the contract for the historical restoration of Casa Ronquillo located in San Luis Santiago for the County of El Paso using Region 19 Contract RFP 17-7261 Job Order Contract to Jordan Foster Construction of El Paso, Texas in the amount of $974,589. Purchasing approved on March 30th, 2021. Funding is available in SR, Tours Promotions, Casa Ronquillo and SG, G Casa Ronquillo 18 capital expenses.
Deborah Carrejo-Troll, County Purchasing Agent. Good morning. This is the item for your restoration of Casa Ronquillo. And we are requesting permission to use the local Region 19 Cooperative for a local vendor to perform this restoration.
Comments? Move to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Oggy?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon? I'm sorry, Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number 10, Health and Social Services. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding El Paso County's designation as successful in the county-wide polling place program. Further authorize the county judge to sign the attached letter to the Texas Secretary of State. Opinion number 21-0427.
Lisa, good morning.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. Lisa Wise, El Paso County Election Administrator. This letter is simply in response to the successful designation that we received from the Texas Secretary of State. As you know, we participated in the pilot program for the November 2020 election using the county-wide polling sites. We were deemed successful with the request for a follow-up letter on what we would plan to do as our population increases. And at, at least from this, this current court, there doesn't seem to be a huge interest in consolidating and cutting down many locations. So we took the election code as a kind of a directive to say, state that we plan to have at least one site for every 5,000 registered voters as required by precinct polling sites. And we, obviously we overhave that right now. We have 151. And if we want to change, we'll go to the, obviously the public forum, have a public hearing and also take that up with the community advisory. That's all in the letter. It's just required that the judge sign a letter for the SOS explaining that.
Thank you. Commissioners, any comments? Move to approve?
The motion, Judge Commissioners, Eric Rosales, the county attorney, the motion would be to authorize the county judge to sign the attached letter to the Texas Secretary of State. Thank you.
Well, thank, thank you. Move to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Oggy?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number 11. Discuss and take appropriate action on considering a modified disbursement disbursement plan than what was approved on February 8th, 2021 for the use of the US Treasury's 4.7 million Emergency Rental Assistance Program.
Irene, good morning.
Hi. Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Irene Balenzuela, Community Services Department. Yes, thank you for, thank you Alexis for putting up the PowerPoint. I just have a brief five slides for you about this agenda item, Judge Commissioners. This is, this item today, I'll be asking you to reconsider two elements of the Emergency Rental Assistance Disbursement Plan that you previously approved back in February 18 when the US Treasury awarded us about 4.7 million dollars for a rental and utility assistance program. Next slide, please, Alexis. Thank you. So I've listed two of the elements that you previously approved, which I'm asking you to reconsider. The first, February 18, you approved the component of rental payments to provide to out-county residents. You approved us to qualify eligible households for up to and not exceed six months of rent assistance per household, which at that time we estimated we could target approximately 275 households out of that funding. Under this request today, I'm asking that you reconsider the number of months households may receive consecutive rent payments to the maximum amount allowed by the Emergency Rental Assistance Program by the US Treasury, which is 12 months, not to exceed 12 months, and an additional three months of rent if we request for an extension from the ERA. The department, we have engaged a local nonprofit foundation to administer this program. On behalf of the county, this foundation successfully administered the city's CARE $6 million rent program in the fall. Will also execute the city's rent program under the Emergency Rental Assistance Program as well. During those scope of work discussions with this nonprofit, we established that aligning our program as closely as possible to the city's program would lessen confusion amongst the region's residents and expedite a more effective rent deployment. The dueling city-county programs during the fall with our CARES Act funds proved to be a significant challenge to residents during that deployment. They were confused about whether they applied at the city's fund or whether they applied at the county. We had different eligibility criteria. They were calling the city's EPRentHelp.org, not knowing that they didn't qualify for the city, then they would call. By the time they got to the county, they had already expensed a lot of effort trying to get through either of the programs. And so we felt that aligning our programs together as close as possible would lessen that confusion. Additionally, the use of the single platform with the one entity with similar eligibility standards would facilitate a wide-range community and outreach, I beg your pardon, communication and outreach strategy that will benefit the entire community. This recommended change is still in keeping with the regulatory allowances that, that the US Treasury allows under this program. Additionally, that second part of this request, that number two on your slide, is asking you to reconsider the funding source for the cash assistance program to out-county residents. You also approved it in February 18, allowing us to use 300,000 from the ERA funds to do a cash disbursement for out-county residents. Under that disbursement plan, you also allowed up to not to exceed six months of cash payments paid directly to residents under certain circumstances that were allowed under the ERA Treasury funds. However, these funds are restrictive in that only, it only allows the cash to be used to pay for rent and utilities only. And only if the landlord does not respond to, does not respond to our outreach, outreach efforts within 10 days of us communicating this program to them. During the fall, we deployed, as you may remember, a cash program utilizing CARES Act funds. It was incredibly successful. We assisted over a thousand out-county households who were experiencing economic hardship due to COVID with a one-time $500 cash payment. During that program, we did receive data that while many of the recipients did use their one-time CARES Act payment to pay for rent or to catch up with rent and mortgage and utilities, but many also self-reported that they use their cash to purchase groceries, medicines and other household and personal care products with that cash. The ERA funds do not address these other cash needs that we know that out-county residents also need. Next slide, please. On this graphic, Judge and Commissioners, in the first box, you will see just a brief recap of what you approved back in February under the Emergency Rental Assistance Funds from the US Treasury. The second box in red is what I am asking you to reconsider. The amount of rental funds invested will not change. I'm still asking you to keep the investment of ERA funds at 2.8 million. We, so we will be still recommending that we disperse that amount of money to out-county residents. The recommended change is to allow us again to qualify households for the maximum amount of consecutive rent payments permissible by ERA, which is 12 months. But they also allow us to extend it with a special request if folks need an additional three months beyond that 12 months. So it would be a not to exceed 15 months. This change potentially could decrease the number of households assisted from what we estimated originally to be able to assist 549 households with a six-months rent to approximately 275 households. But this would only be if every single household that applied required that entire 15 months of consecutive rent payments. However, because ERA does require that we recertify household income every three months, many who originally qualify at the beginning due to their economic COVID hardship may have improved financial circumstances after those three months and may not qualify or need any further assistance. So in essence, we may still be able to target several households, up to about 1,000 families that we estimate at the end of the funding period. And that's because if we assist any, anywhere beyond three months, we're supposed to recertify families. And so they may not need assistance beyond that or qualify assistance. And so we may be able to add other families within that program. You allow us to, to change this part of the disbursement plan so we can finalize those scope of work and contract discussions with the potential nonprofit. We will bring that contract back to you for full consideration and approval if you approve this change. Next slide, please. For the cash assistance disbursement, we're requesting that you consider the fund source from which we execute this program from. Rather than using ERA funds as you approved in February 8, we're recommending that you consider allowing us to utilize either reserve CARES Act funds or general fund dollars to, to deploy this program. The funding amount requested will still be $300,000. The fundamentals of the cash program remain unchanged. Households must still demonstrate a hardship due to COVID-19 and meet low-income thresholds. They would receive monthly cash payments, payments not to exceed six months and $3,500 total per household. However, the advantage of using a less restrictive fund source to execute this program is that the county will be able to leverage almost a dollar-for-dollar investment from private philanthropy for this purpose. There's already a commitment in place from private philanthropy of $295,000 for this cash effort. And that comes from the Woody and Gale Hunt Family Foundation, who if you recall, also invested in our CARES Act one-time cash relief in the fall. And, and there's other private donors that have also committed to this program as well. These private dollars are committed to us with the intent of assisting households with the least amount of restrictions to meet all of their cash needs, not just rent and utility, which ERA funds restrict us only to rent and utilities. So we do want to take advantage of this private investment to reach more county households whose primary source of purchaseability in the county is with cash. We do know that our out-county residents primarily function with, in a cash economy. So restricting the use of these funds is extremely helpful during this COVID economic hardship for them. Without this private commitment, our ERA funds could only assist about 86 households. I listed on that grayscale box above approximately 150 households. I, I said 150 at the, at that time because I, I thought we could use our ERA funds along with private philanthropy funds to target 150 households. But because those private funds are committed for less restrictive uses, using ERA funds alone for a cash program would only assist about 86 households. But combining our funds with private dollars doubles the amount of households we can assist with cash. Additionally, using the less restrictive funding source enables the administering agency to deploy the funds more easily, reducing the administrative fee from 10% to 5%, making even more funds available for households. So at this rate, we estimate that we could assist 165 families with the private commitment and the additional funds that we can save from lowering the administrative fee. Any use of these funds with any alternate funding source for cash payments will still undergo vetting by the county attorney's office and will still come before you for consideration once the county attorney review process has been completed. Next slide, please. So I'm recommending that you approve the policy and plan changes as described in this presentation. But if you approve these today, it's just a change in the plan and the policy so that we may continue our, our contract discussions with the potential nonprofits that will help us deploy these. But we will bring those contracts back to you after county attorney review and approval for your consideration. And so at this time, I'm happy to answer any other questions that you may have about this.
Judge, you're muted, Judge? Yes, Commissioner Oggy, and thank you, Irene.
Thank you, Irene. So I was trying to remember the discussion that we had last time. So I, I'm going to speak first to your first request to amend the Rental Assistance Program to align it more with the city. So I, I agree that the closest we can get to the city's program, since we are going to have the same nonprofit organization administering the two, is, is good. That's a good thing to, to lessen any kind of confusion and just to make it more streamlined. However, I, I really do not feel comfortable with the potential of 15 months' worth of assistance because I remember the last time we had this discussion. I mean, we discussed the possibility of three months. We discussed the possibility of 12 months. And we all agreed that six months was a good middle point because we wanted to try to help as many families as possible. We wanted to give as many families as possible that opportunity to apply for this assistance. And I personally just am not comfortable with potentially going down from helping 549 families to only being able to help 275. I mean, that's, that's half. So I, I just, I, I don't see how having a different term necessarily would impact our ability to still have this, you know, still have the Paso del Norte Community Foundation administer the program. For us, it seems to me that as long as folks, I, I agree, having one number to call, one website to go to, it is, should be the way that it is. But the first thing that we do is collect their address, I'm sure. And so immediately the administrator of the program will be able to tell if it's a person who lives out in the county or if it's an applicant who lives within the city limits. And so immediately they'll be able to launch right into, well, this is the program that you qualify for. So I agree with you completely that as much as we can make, match up with the city's program is great. But I don't necessarily agree that the term also has to be exactly the same. Because if our goal is to try to help as many families, to try to make sure as many families are eligible as possible, I would just hate to tie up all of our funds for potentially, you know, 15 months because that greatly reduces the number of families that are going to be eligible. So it seems to me that once the, the family's address is- So it seems to me that once the the family's address is collected, very easily will the Paso del Norte Community Foundation be able to tell them, okay, well, this is you you potentially qualify for up to six months as opposed to, okay, you potentially qualify for up to 15 months. So I don't really see how that would make the agreement unworkable.
I I don't think it makes it unworkable, Commissioner. It's it's a it's the web-based platform that they're using that makes it difficult for the, I guess, the the platform that they're using to be able to separate the two programs. Because if, you know, they come in and apply, there's going to be a landlord and a tenant portal. So both both can apply. The landlord can apply on behalf of the tenant with a tenant approval. Then the tenant can also apply directly for their for their own assistance. We would they would pay the landlord, however, directly. But the differing eligibility criteria does make it difficult for PDN's platform to administer it. And and so it's what we've been told that it's it's just it would take some challenges to change the the database platform in the background to be able to administer dual-in programs. And so that's why we were asked if we could align it with the cities. It's up to and not to exceed those 12 plus three additional months. It doesn't mean that we will assist everyone or for 15 months. It 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 just means that we could do it up to those 15 months. We requalify and recertify everyone at the three-month mark. And at that three-month mark, we find out whether they need more. We could then assist them for another three months, then we have to recertify again. Then if they need more, then we could then go beyond if you approve past the six months. But at the three-month mark, if they do not qualify based on income, and this is required under the ERA regulatory structure, we have to recertify. It's not an internal criteria that we're developing. It's it's a regulatory structure that comes straight from the U.S. Treasury that we have to recertify. And so if they don't qualify at the three-month mark, we close their specific household assistance and we move on to a different family. So there's potential that we may assist a lot more beyond the 275. It's just giving us that flexibility to be able to align our platforms together with that of the cities.
And I understand that. I understand that not all of the families may potentially go to the full 15 months. But I think that we have to be prepared for that as a possibility. And for me, what I feel is more more important is giving more families an opportunity to be able to ask for help. And that's why I just I really feel that the 15 months potential, you know, potentially 15 months. To me, I I just feel like we're limiting the number of families that may be able to get this assistance. And I I guess I just still don't understand why what the difficulty is with the platform. I mean, the first thing they're going to collect is address and zip code. So I just I I guess maybe if we had someone from the Paso del Norte Foundation who could show us the platform and why it makes it so difficult that our eligibility period doesn't necessarily match up. I mean, it seems once you have the address and the zip code, you can very, very easily tell if you're talking to an applicant from within the city as opposed to outside of the city, out in the county, and then you know exactly what the what what the different terms are. And then I'd also have the question, once you brought that up about the portal, is is that the only way that people are able to apply? I mean, we've had this discussion with regards to the vaccines about internet accessibility and making sure everyone has the ability to apply for all of the programs that we're offering to try to help the community. So I'd hate to think that the portal is going to be the only way for people to apply. And I don't know if we've touched on that or not, but just as you were talking about the portal, it made me think about that. So I'd I'd really want to make sure that that's not the only way that people are able to apply for assistance.
That's a that's a good point. Thank you for bringing it up, Commissioner. Along with the February 8 approval of of this dispersment plan, you also approved us to engage in contract negotiations with the United Way of El Paso County to serve as a navigation service on behalf of the county. They will serve as that connection piece for county residents. They would call in, a navigator will assist them to connect to all the services, including the rent and utility assistance that we're deploying. So they will actually have some an in-person assistant or navigator, rather, to help them navigate all these resources, handhold them through this process and and stay on their case until they connect with all the resources available to them. So that is a separate contract that we're engaging in and we'll we'll bring that to you also later this month. But it is part of a component of this. The portal is an online portal, but you you will have a phone call center type process where where county residents can call and they will get handheld through this process of applying through through the the PDN effort. If you'd like, if it's if it's the the consensus of the court, what I can do is we can postpone this piece of of the agenda item. And I could have the Paso del Norte would ask them to come before you and and provide that kind of portal demonstration to you all so that you can see how it's going to be and also present what type of challenges it comes if we have a change in in eligibility standard so that they could be able to explain it better for you and you can see how how that process works.
I know I would appreciate that. I don't know, I think Commissioner Stout, maybe, I don't know, has questions about this particular issue.
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Stout.
Thanks, Judge. And I I agree with with Commissioner Ogden 100%. I I I think we should we should definitely look at keeping 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 things the way they are. You know, I don't think that we should, in the in the, I guess, in the vein of of trying to have, you know, things streamlined technologically, you know, take the opportunity for helping folks and more more folks away. You know, I I think that it should be if it's a technological issue or the platform issue, it seems to me like there should be an easy fix to that. And, you know, if they really want to have, you know, the same the same terms, well, why don't we propose to them that they come down to our terms so that they can help more people as well? You know, so I I I agree with Commissioner Ogden.
Thank you, Commissioner. Irene, I wanted to ask you because before I focus on 15 months, because my concern is that we're almost saying, since you reevaluate them, that that helps me understand. I don't worry about the 15 months because we're reevaluating them. So at any point, what I what I think you might be looking at, and if you could answer the question about, so when they get to six months and they need it, we cut them off? Because, you know, we're our program says six months. And so my concern is, why would you do that if they still have a need? And so I wanted to ask you, have you had those issues where someone that really needs your help no longer gets your help because we cut them off at the, you know, sort of at a at the six-month point? Could you address that, please?
Yes, sir, absolutely. So at your, the way you approved it in February 8, it is at a six-month cutoff. So we would just develop a six-month program where we would just approve six months of rent. If they need it further, we couldn't assist them further. And so the additional months, the 12 up to the 15 months, provides us that flexibility to continue to assist if they need it. And so in the past, for CARES Act funds, we were only assisting two months of rent at that time for the same reasons that Commissioner Stout and Commissioner Ogden have brought up. We wanted to maximize those funds and reach more families. But we did have instances where families needed the beyond the two months. But because our program only allowed two months of rent, we couldn't help them with CARES Act funds. And we we then, if we were able to connect them with other entities that were offering rent, we would do that. Or we would assist them either with our own limited general fund dollars that we have for rental assistance or again, connect them with other sources in within the community. But we we do have instances where that with that occurs. And and so but having that flexibility, again, it it is within the ERA regulatory structure to do the 12 months plus three. But it's it's up to the court. This is why we brought it up for you to consider or reconsider this. And and I I will do whatever the will of the court asks. If it's a six months, we will maintain it at the six months or bring PDN and have them discuss what those differences in that platform and the technology platform would do.
And Judge, I guess my concern, I understand that we're going to be recertifying families every three months. I understand that completely. But my concern is, so if we move to the possible 15 months, once you certify a family, we're locking that money up, right? We're not able to, we have to wait to see if that family is going to keep getting recertified. I mean, we basically have to keep 15 months of funds in reserves because it may be that that family needs those 15 months. And my concern is that when we're doing that, we're potentially not helping other people that also have that need.
Well, yeah, that that's a great point because we are holding. Yeah, but my concern was, wow, you get someone who's at six months, they really need it, and they're already part of the program and you're cutting them off. And so that was what I was worried, but your point is, well, take it. Commissioner Leon, please.
Judge, I basically had the same concerns, but that helps a lot. But a thought that came and and an idea is in the next wave of federal funding, I anticipate it's going to be within the next six months. So that might be a little bridge that we might need for those families that are still stuck in in those six months that we may be able to help them in in the near near future. So I think that by going staying with our six months, I think we're going a good course, we're helping a lot more families. And I think it might be moot in the next coming weeks as we receive more federal funding.
Good point. Thank you.
Judge, one more question on my behalf for for Irene. Do you know, Irene, since we're since we're contracting with the United Way and the and the navigation services, are they also going to be, you know, trying trying to help these folks if if they, for example, are out of a job or, you know, they they just don't have have income? You know, are they going to be also helping them to try to place them with with jobs or or something like that? So that we're so we we can try to help mitigate what the judge is talking about, right? We help them for six months, but at the same time, we try to help them find a way to be self-sustainable.
Right, the navigation services come with case management. And so they would they will be connecting the the clients not just for resources available, but any other assistance that they may need and that they identify at the screening and intake process. So think of it as they're calling. It's a it's a expanded, a much expanded version of the two-on-one system. So they would call the navigation service and they say, John Smith, I live in the county and I'm behind on my rent. And so that's the only thing John Smith says they have. But the navigation, the navigator will start asking, are there other needs that we can address? Do you have, are you unemployed? Those things, things of that nature, do you need counseling services? And and so they will they will be connecting them with everything that they need. So if they're unemployed, they're going to be walking them through that process. It's a very intensive case management process. So yes, to answer your question, sir, they they will be doing those things.
So then perhaps they can help us track the folks who, like Commissioner Leon said, after the six months may need that continuing help and and maybe there's additional funds at that point that we can help them with. But it seems that the United Way would be able to help us keep track of those folks, right? The folks that need the help beyond the six months, which I I I don't know if that's going to be the majority of the folks or maybe only a small subset of the folks that needed the assistance. But it seems that the United Way could help us keep track of those folks so we can make sure that that we're that we can continue to keep helping them even past the six months. But outside of this program, maybe.
Thank you.
Perhaps, yes, ma'am.
All right, Judge.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Robinson, go ahead.
My my thoughts are along the same line as Commissioner Ogden in regards to the limitations that we we impose on ourselves as far as how we disperse the funds. But I would like to hear from the United Way and the and the foundation in regards to a little bit more little more detail.
Would they happen to be, they're not on the line or anything, right, Irene?
No, no, they're they're not in the lines, sir. But what I can do is I can post another item in your next week's agenda to have the foundation come in and kind of give you a demonstration of their platform so that you can see how they're processed and bring them. And then they may be able to answer some of your questions and address some of your concerns.
Excellent, that'd be, I think, a great item, especially as we're moving forward. Because that was your idea was to get ready for some of these things that are coming up.
Let's do that, Judge.
Sure, thank you, Commissioner Robinson, good recommendation. So given the comments, Irene, what what would you like to do at this point?
What's Well, it's up to the the commissioners. If you want to just proceed with no change whatsoever, then the the current plan stays as approved February 8. Or if you want to postpone that piece, I don't know if maybe I'll rely on the county attorney's office to give us guidance on that, postpone that piece until after the presentation from the Paso del Norte Community Foundation. And then just move on to the second piece of this item and we can consider that part.
Irene, and I would ask that the court do wait until you hear that presentation, just move this this portion of this request. That keeps your your options open for the court, doesn't force you to change, but it allows you to, if you'd like to, after hearing their presentation. I don't think you will, but but it'll give you that flexibility.
I mean, it's not time-sensitive or anything, so we could, you know, listen to.
It's time-sensitive in the sense, Judge, that we want to start getting this help out to folks as quickly as possible. So hopefully, they're available for our next meeting. And I would just ask Irene if they could really focus on the 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 issue about why it is difficult to to identify the folks that are out in the county if if we stick to our six-month recommendation as opposed to the 15, potential 15 months through the city.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
I move to postpone.
Second.
Before before you vote on that, Judge Commissioners, the, we don't want to postpone the entire item because we do believe the cash assistance you can discuss and take appropriate action on today.
Yes. So I think hearing this, so I correct me if I'm wrong, Erica Rosales, assistant county attorney, the motion could be to approve the modest, the modified policy, excuse me, the modified dispersment plan policy for the Emergency Rental Assistance Program as described by Ms. Vanzuela, except for the length of time for the rental assistance program. Does that capture it?
No, but that's the only thing that we're considering, Erica.
Right, right. It would it would be no change because they they already approved the six-month plans and and this piece of the item is asking them to reconsider that. So it'd be no change from the approval from February 8.
No action, okay.
But it's a two-piece, go ahead, I'm sorry, Betsy.
I'm sorry, no action on that portion today. With staff, you've already given staff direction to bring it back. But if we can, so there would be no action on that piece, we would bring it back. And by no action, you're not changing your previous order.
Right.
And so we don't need a motion to postpone.
Okay.
But we'll go over the cash assistance item and there might be action under that item.
Correct. Was there any questions or concerns on the cash on the cash assistance?
I do, but I think Commissioner Robinson was trying to make a comment before I make my comments on the second piece that we're going to discuss.
Well, if that's affected the rest of the commission, I would draw a motion.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Are we moving on to the second piece, Judge? I do have some questions about that as well.
And you had a comment, so go ahead, Commissioner Ogden.
Yes, so I I agree. Obviously, we don't want to lose that opportunity to have the the matching 295,000 from private philanthropy groups. So I I'm in favor of not using the ERA funds for this program. I would support using the CARES Act funds. I know we just heard in Waller's presentation that we still have a little bit over 2 million left in the reserves, and this would require 300,000 of that, so I'd be in favor of doing that. My question, though, Irene, is then what's going to happen to the 300,000 in ERA funds that we had previously on the 8th of February designated for this use? What are we going, what's the plan for that? Is that going to go back into the the rental subsidies program that we talked about? Or or have you thought of where those extra 300,000? Because I actually thought of a potential way to use those 300,000. I I don't know if we reached out to the Lower Valley Water District, but I had a conversation with them not too long ago where they can very easily identify customers of theirs who are having trouble paying their bills right now, who are on the verge. Obviously, we don't want to see anyone disconnected from water service. Obviously, we don't wanna see anyone disconnected from water service right now, especially in the middle of a pandemic. Um, so I'm wondering if maybe some of those funds could be used in partnership with them to have them help us identify households that we know are on the verge of losing these services because of their inability to pay. And once we can confirm that it's COVID-related, then maybe these funds could be used towards helping pay those specific bills.
Irene, you want to address that? That is, I'm sorry, Judge.
No, I was just saying, could you address that comment from Commissioner Olguin?
Absolutely. So that was, our plan was to repurpose these funds into the utility portion of the allowances for this funding. We already are engaging in a partnership for electric. We'd reached out to Texas Gas Service. They gave us their arrears accounts uh in the county as well. We have reached out to the Lower Valley Water District on numerous occasions, ma'am, um, to, for us to assist them, um, but we haven't had that um, that feedback from them. We are aware that there's several accounts in the out-county areas from Lower Valley Water District that are in arrears. They had been working with Project Bravo to address that, and I, I, for that reason, they hadn't uh connected with the county, but we have attempted numerous times to reach the Lower Valley Water District to allow us to assist. And so I think that uh we're working with them already. I believe we have made some contact already with, with one of their staff people so that we can connect, but that was, our idea was to repurpose these funds for utility so that we could try to address all of the arrears. All three utilities have uh told us that they, they have out-county arrears uh that, that they could address with these funds.
Great. And I'll help put you into contact with someone at the Lower Valley Water District. After the meeting, I'll send you an email and put you in contact. They have a person specifically who works on grants, and I think he'd probably be the best one to put you in contact with.
Is it Mr. Michael Flores?
Yes.
Is that, okay. Yes, I, I attempted to contact Mr. Flores already.
Okay. I'll, I'll make sure that you get in contact with him.
Excellent, thank you.
Commissioner Stout, please. Go ahead.
I had, I, I had a question. I was a little confused. Um, as to, so on the, on the repurpose that you're talking about, I'm, I'm also fine with, with, with doing that, and I like what y'all are talking about, but I, I was just confused as to why, so in the first option, we had three hundred thousand, it's helping a hundred and fifty families, and then we're adding additional, almost three hundred thousand, and it's only helping them, you know, increasing the number of families that we'd be helping by fifteen. Can you explain to me what that, what, why that is?
That's, yes, sir, that's a typographical error from, from my end. Um, the hundred, the three hundred thousand originally would, from our funds alone, will only assist eighty-six families. I had put a hundred and fifty because that's what I anticipated to assist with private dollars together. But when the private philanthropist dollars um put the condition of unrestricted use of the funds, then it, it comes down to just eighty-six. So that was my fault. That was my, my error on that presentation, sir. So it actually goes from eighty-six to a hundred and sixty-five.
Gotcha. Okay.
Good catch. Thank you.
So are we thinking, Irene?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, go ahead, no, go ahead, go ahead.
I was just gonna make a motion to approve it, but if you, if there's more discussion, let's have more discussion.
I was just gonna say, are we thinking then, it's three hundred thousand total, sir? Are we thinking about splitting it evenly? So maybe a hundred thousand going towards electric, a hundred thousand going towards gas, and a hundred thousand going to, towards water? Is that roughly what you were thinking, or?
Um, we could do that, ma'am. Uh, we, we already have three hundred thousand from these ERA funds that you approved for us to connect with electric, and so I was thinking of having the remaining, these three hundred repurposed for gas and water.
Oh, okay.
So for a total, yes, ma'am, for a total of six hundred thousand for utilities alone.
Nice. Okay, go ahead, done with your motion.
Okay, so I'll, I'll go ahead, I'll, I'll, I'll make the motion to, to approve the, the repurposing of the ERA, um, uh, u- using CARES, CARES Act funding for uh the repurpose and then taking the three hundred thousand from ERA and using it for utilities.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Olguin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samanego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you all, so I will post another item.
I saw Wally come up, I wasn't sure if he was gonna comment or, no, okay. I'm, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Irene.
I will post a, another item for your next week's agenda uh so that we can uh have PDN present to you their platform and what, what challenges that, that they feel presents if, if, if we don't align with that platform. And then uh perhaps then we can then reconsider or not uh that first piece of this agenda item.
Thank you, Irene. And once again, great work, lots of passion behind it, and a lot of, you're right in the, in the, in the battle there, so we, we thank you for any opportunity to come back and educate us on what's happening and some of the challenges that are out there. So thank you, Irene, and, and your entire team. Just a great job.
Thank you all for your support.
Thank you. Jessica?
This completes all the items on today's agenda, Judge.
I'm sorry, it doesn't compute. Say that again. We thank you. Uh, Commissioner, uh, Leon, you wanted a little bit more efficiency and?
I tell you, we, we did it today, so.
Our personal bits, uh, but in, in a, in a good way. So, now, once again, thank you. I mean, great week to everyone. Look forward, uh, lots of things coming up. Vaccination's gonna be one of the most important things. Uh, we gotta get ahead of, of the virus and any variations, so the vaccine is really uh something that's important, and we will be, Mayor and I will be discussing the amount of the increases that are gonna come of this particular week. So I wish everyone and thank everybody in our teams and our translators, uh, thank you for being with us as well, and Betsy and your team and everyone else. So, uh, thank you. Have a, a great week. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Have a good week.
This concludes today's meeting at eleven seventeen A.M.